How many?
Good evening and welcome to the May 2nd school board meeting. Let's start with the pledge.
You know what, I don't think Jerry's here.
Pledge, through the flag of the United States of America, and through the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jerry. And we'll begin with our public input statement read by our vice chair.
The first public input session is a 21-minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. Each speaker will give his or her name, address, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel, cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward with respect. This is a time for comments and/or questions for the board, but please be aware that questions may not be able to be answered at this meeting.
Thank you. Public input? None at this time? Minutes of April 11th, because everyone had a chance to read.
So apologies, apparently you didn't have access, so now I just read something.
Can we give a few minutes?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Which?
The 11th.
11th, yes.
Most recent email.
Yeah, and it's, there's some formal legal language in there, so make sure you take a peek at it.
Page four at the bottom, approval of 2425 school calendar. There's a space before the period after the word presented in the second line.
All right, hold on.
Oh, yeah, presented.
Sorry, I'm speed reading. One second.
Gotcha, thank you.
For the final draft, do you want it to say, insert the financing note in school document here?
No, we'll take that out, because we have that there. Thank you. Someone's talking up there.
Thank you, motion approved in minutes.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Have a hesitant area.
Not quite there yet.
Second has amended.
Is that you, Lauren?
Yep.
Thanks, sorry.
All in favor of accepting the minutes? Next on the agenda is Lebanon Elementary School Leach Field.
Okay, yeah, all right. So Jen, in the packet of your agenda, sent out the proposal, and I'm just, this is the hard copy of the quote itself. And Kevin is available to sign if we need to speak with him. So this, the intent of this meeting, of this part of the meeting, is to just have a summary, a quick summary of the information. We're going to invite Kevin to come in at a later meeting to just talk through it, but we wanted to make sure you had the quote. So this is from civil consultants. And if we were to do this work, that is if, it's going to be about $125,900. Currently, we are pumping that leach field every week, and it's $475, $475 per week. So, that said, if we do nothing for the, for like 12 months, it would be $24,650.
To keep it pumped.
To keep it pumped. The, when civil consultants got in to look more closely as they were giving, going through the quoting process, they realized that the kitchen is hooked up to that, that leach field and is a staff bathroom. So it's a little more involved as far as, when it first happened, we just thought it was going to be a few bathrooms and we would have, you know, access to other spaces, but really the kitchen is more of a significant layer of concern for that. So this goes to a bigger discussion that we started having with the budget process, our long-range goals for Lebanon Elementary. So that's why we're inviting Kevin to come in at our next meeting and talk through this piece. You know, is there, you know, what do we want to do, knowing that we have, you know, we're going to commission a study of all of our facilities coming up in the next several months? And, you know, we just want to make a really good decision for our taxpayers, our students, our staff in that building. So any initial questions about just the document?
I'm sorry, what did you say it is per pump?
Per week.
Per week, yeah.
It's $475.
And is it reasonable to think you might have to do it more often than that at some point, or?
We're going to get a good.
Yeah, we'll have a better handle next week.
Yes.
Right, but it looks, currently it's looking like once a week has been sufficient, and then we're going into the summer months where it will be less of an issue, just because the kitchen won't be in use, or that kind of thing. It's really the, it's really just school year use that we are like, okay, what do we need to do? We have some, that's the thing about this, is there are, because we're still trying to figure out what's with the building, we do have some options of things. There's this piece of it, like, which is, you know, really just band-aiding it completely by just pumping it out once a week. Or there's the full replacement of the leach field and the tank, which is the 125,900. And then Kevin will talk to you about it, but there's an option also of just replacing the leach field. The tank currently does not appear to be impacted, but it's not a new tank. So there is, like, there's three options that we can look at.
Would we be able to consider, because we're going through the process of evaluating our facilities, to continue, is continuing pumping a possibility for, I mean, without dollars, that'd be five years until you.
Right, right. So we would have to, we would have to get more information. I think short-term, we were, we were looking at it as, is this our year of a Band-Aid, doing the pump, you know, every, every week? Could it go longer? Maybe, Josh, yeah, you know? I think the other part that's difficult with it, though, is that we are not utilizing the two bathrooms that are, the common bathrooms that are on the quote "new wing," which is what, 1952, but the new wing? So they are down some bathrooms, it's, it's doable, like there's.
Is that because they use a different leach field?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, originally we, with them figuring things out, they didn't, Kevin didn't originally recognize that the kitchen and the staff bathroom were on this leach field that's struggling that way. So that's where the, that's where we're needing to pump it out, because we're using the water. And it's mostly gray water from the kitchen, you know, but still.
So if we did it now, where would we get money from, that money from content year, the, what you call it, fund there?
What you call it? We would look at, we would, you know, we would look at this going into the coming school year. We wouldn't do it, you know, this, in the current fiscal year, but, yeah, and then you look for savings wherever you can to make it work. Because of the emergency things that happen.
How long have we been doing this?
The pumping?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just a couple of months?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can't even.
So in the budget we just approved, what, relative to this, what was in there?
We didn't have any quotes from civil consultants at that point in time.
Yeah, what was the 475?
So this all happened at the very tail end of the budget. So like, this was not, I think it might have even happened right at the end of our approvals. So it hasn't even been two months, honestly, when I think about it, so. You know, it's like the gifts that keep on giving.
Other questions? Budget update?
Okay, just a few quick updates. We've invited the select boards from all three towns to our May 16th. That's the day we have a board meeting, but we invited them to come over at 6:00 PM. So from 6:00 to 6:45, just to talk about the district budget and some of our long-range, kind of, long-range and short-term goals, but also some of our challenges. For example, Lebanon Elementary, right? Just to kind of get them in and go through that process. Last year was the first time that we met with all three at the same time, and it was very productive. So we're looking forward to that meeting again. So again, that'll be May 16th at 6:00 PM here at the, probably in the library, just because we try to have everybody sitting around the table. The annual report was sent to the printer right before we had April break, and that will be going out to all community members very shortly. They just had to prove a couple pieces, and then they're going to start printing and sending that out. If that doesn't go out before, you know, we try to make sure our select boards have that information a few nights ahead of our meeting, so we will send, we can just send it electronically to them if we need to. So they'll have that. Over the next two weeks, just really quickly, we'll be able to get PO meetings for each, for North Berwick, Lebanon, and Berwick. So we're going to go through the budget at those meetings and as well as talk about the budget hearing and about the budget vote, just to kind of set that up, because we will be out of school for the budget vote. So we just want to make sure that it's on the radar for voting day. So those are our updates on the budget.
All right, nomination of probationary teachers?
Okay, so Jen sent you a list of probationary teachers that were approved last year that are able to move to status two, so their second year of probationary status. Similar to the administrators, we don't read off the names, you have the list, so we would just need a motion to approve. I will say that their evaluations have been, you know, their observations and evaluations have been completed. They're in good standing, and that's why we're recommending a second year at this time.
We have a.
Do we have to do it separately for each list, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole, not individual, not under, sorry. I make a motion to approve the level, the year two probationary teachers.
Second. All in favor?
Discussion before we vote. Can you just overview the overall process, like the, when they, their first-year teaching to get in tenured status? Like, how does that work here in Maine?
So they start their first year, and then they go into their second year. And after their second year, they move on to continuing contract, and that's when they are considered tenured, so to speak. So that's when, you know, they're vested in the whole system of, you know, the evaluation system, as well as the main system, the Department of Ed system.
So, so probationary one to two would be teachers who are completing their second year and going into.
They wanted to is going into their second year. Yeah, probationary one.
Oh, then two, okay, so they're going into this, and so they've complete, essentially they are in the process of completing their first year.
Yep.
We need to notify them now.
Yeah.
Of that, so that's why we're moving, instead of June, we have to do it now.
Yeah, I have a question. I have a couple of teachers now, one on each list, where their positions may be possibly not in the budget. How do we do this?
Not in the budget, in what regard?
Next year.
Okay, in what regard? Because of the RIFs program.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, so that's a good question. So there are, if you look at the list, there are teachers on the probationary list that may be RIFed based on our budget process that we've gone through. We still need to, they're in good standing. So we are saying that they are in good standing, so that if, as part of the RIF, they are going to be able to get a position, a like position if something opens in the district. So you're approving them because they're in good standing. So that allows us to officially offer them something that comes up in their certification range in the district.
And though that they're listed for that position, it can still change with the RIFs.
Yes, and they are aware, they are aware of being RIFed, and they are aware that they're coming up this evening for approval because they're in good standing. Okay, just, it's very complicated.
There'll be another meeting where you guys are actually going to approve the RIFs that need to be made. But we want them to know that they are in good standing now.
Very good.
And then, just in the data that I see there, right? It's all, it's all, yes, we recommend it. So do we have any staff members who are not on this list, who have completed their first year and who are not being recommended, and they're just not included in this list? Is that how it's due?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we heard the motion, and it was seconded. Any further discussions? All in favor?
All.
And then you have the list of probationary two to continue in contract. So these are the ones that are going on.
I thought that's what we did.
I said two first.
We did.
Okay, so we'll be.
Make a motion for. I think I thought you. Probationary one.
You know what, I thought I heard that, okay.
Sorry.
So probationary one to two.
I thought that's what we just voted on.
No, I said two.
No, she said two, I thought we were two, too.
I thought we were doing two.
Wow, do we have questions? I'll have to make sure, I think it's the same question.
So we're good with two?
I'll second probationary one.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Sorry, who made that one? Was it Lauren?
Lauren.
Lauren did it again?
Okay. Next on the agenda is the nomination of Special Education Director.
Okay, so Melissa Adams, in our second row, is being nominated this evening for our Director of Special Education. So we advertised the position, we, on several different sites, and then we held interviews. The first round of interviews was with K-12 staff, and that was a pretty big group of staff members that interviewed that. And then from there, we looked at moving on to the second round, which was made up of administrators, and Lauren sat in on that, thank you for coming. I know that that was a very hard time for everybody, but I appreciate that. And that interview occurred, we did the vetting of the references. Melissa has been in our district for this past year as an IP coordinator, so she's familiar with our district. And so we are bringing her forward for nomination this evening.
I make a motion to nominate her for Special Education Director.
All second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Thank you so much. So with the administrators, hi Melissa, welcome, thank you so much for being here. It's kind of an awkward thing, but I, you know, do my responsibilities. When it comes to administrator certification, right, so I assume the job description was created.
There is a job description.
I didn't, I don't remember seeing it.
Online?
It wasn't presented to me, so I didn't search for it, and true, I didn't search for it, but if it was presented to me, then I must have missed it, that was mine.
Okay.
So, and then it says the clear stated criteria for the position, I haven't read that criteria for the positions either, like that opportunity to do so. And then the interview has to be related to those two things, and, and I assume that it was, I certainly hope that it was. So, but I still, even as a follow-up, I'd still love to see those two documents as far as that is concerned. And then the other thing, just in reviewing your application, nice application, you have a lot of experience in education, a long time. My, my only reservation, and I will publicly state my reservation, is that you, you focus a lot on trauma-informed training that you've received, and I didn't read very much about academics. And academics are, in my opinion, the number-one concern in the state of Maine and our district. And so I need to say that loud and clear. Like, are, we are in deep trouble in academics in the state of Maine. We are currently ranked 51st out of 51 states in the United States. Forty years ago, we were ranked number one. So, and I've been in the education career for 20 years, so, you know, we have to eventually have this discussion. I think it's important that you, as you're coming on, that you hear that. And it is part of our discussion in that I didn't, I didn't read it, and I don't know if any of the interview questions were about.
I wanted, like, I can't specifically speak on things.
Nope, I know.
But I was very pleasantly surprised by the whole interview experience. I'd sat on a previous administrator role before, and I was expecting the same list of questions, and I turned it, and I was like, oh my God, I'd like answering these. And especially the educational ones and classroom settings and everything. I was blown away by her responses, her situations, examples she's used in this district just within the last year that she's been here, as well as in her past. I think she, my personal opinion is she 100% hit, like nailed those, that's not, I know she does have a trauma background, and we did talk about that, which does add actually a wonderful piece to this position. But she excelled in sharing classroom and academic experiences, and how she was able to improve, assist, help adapt in different situations with a classroom setting.
Fantastic, I thank you for attending that interview and being able to share that. Thank you.
We have to vote now? So we have the motion, we have the second? All in favor? Welcome, Melissa.
Welcome, thank you.
Very, very excited. Obviously, I come from a background of social work and then moving into education. I'm a fourth-generation Maine teacher. And so when you talk about academics, like, I remember my grandmother's one-room schoolhouse pictures, and so I understand and appreciate the need for academic, being a huge and direct focus of the work we do. It has been an absolute pleasure working with the staff of SAV60, being in the classrooms, getting to know the students this year. I'm very excited to continue supporting and collaborating, moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome too. Employment.
Yeah, so the next couple of meetings, we typically see an, you know, an increase in movement or resignations, retirements, and tonight kind of starts that process. So we have Rosanna Pass, who is Noble High School Spanish teacher, the R is, there we go. She's asking for a leave of absence. We typically see these in March is when we bring these forward. However, there are some extenuating circumstances, so we said we would bring this forward this evening. So she's asking for a one-year leave of absence starting in September.
Motion to approve that. Second?
Second.
All second votes? All in favor?
And then we have Allison George, who is, this is for the new hires. So Allison is applied for the Multiple Pathways Science Teacher, which we had that vacancy, somebody left midway through this year. So this is that position, starting in September. So Allison is currently working, I'm trying to get that, she's done some work at Girl Scouts of Maine, running some camps, as well as Ready, Set, Go Nature Center, so an outdoor nature classroom, an outdoor school. So she has a lot of really good ideas and experience with the science and, and those pieces. She's getting her master's degree, and she just is ready. She's, she's had the whole team meeting at the school level, she met with me earlier this week. References were very, were stellar. So just some really good ideas and energy, and really understands multiple pathways and, you know, the opportunities that we have for our students for that program, so.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right, and this is where we have a couple of resignations. We have Stephanie Neme from Noble Middle School, grade six, and that's Social Studies. And these have to be done individually.
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
And then Amanda Lebow, Noble Middle School Science Teacher.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
And then Karina Chapman, Noble Middle School, and she's been, I will say, Karina's been there for over 20 years, and she's relocating. Yeah.
Make the motion with regrets, motion?
Second.
All in favor?
And Leah Billing from Lebanon Schools, and she's the speech and language therapist, pathologist.
So moved.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Julia Carr, Huzzy School Kindergarten.
Also moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, and the last one we have this evening is retirement. Mary Fitzgerald. Mary has been in our district 34 years. She is currently the assistant, one of the assistant special education directors. She started working with Sue.
She was my. The very beginning.
Yep, yep, so teacher all the way up through, so, and she submitted her retirement letter. We knew it was coming, but she just submitted that a couple, like, right during break, so.
And so moved with regrets and thanks. Thank her for her years in the district.
For the teachers that are leaving, like, can, do we know what their reason is?
Some of them are, I, when I, when, when they write it, I can, I say it, but if not, I try not, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Ends at interviews? For everyone, or just when requested, or?
Accommodation, yes. So yes, most often, yes.
And who, are those just with you guys, or who's?
It can be whomever they, sometimes it's with the, like, if it's a department, they'll sit with the department director, or they'll sit with us, or the principal if they, yeah.
Thank you. Celebrations.
Okay, so just, we have a couple that will have some links in the minutes, just because some of them are online. We have, I'll start with Noble High School History Teacher Meg Fox, was recently highlighted as part of the 20 Outstanding Women of 2024. So not only does Meg teach here in the district, but she also works with three of our youth in the Ryan Home, and provides guidance and support as they navigate, you know, all the challenges and transitions that life has, and high school has, and so we congratulate Meg on that. So again, that will be a link in the, in minutes, so you can see that if you haven't been able to watch that yet. Another celebration is that Noble Middle School was recently the subject of a Maine Department of Education statewide newsletter, which highlight, was highlighting our bar program at the middle school. We run a pretty robust bar program here and at the high, at the middle school, high school. Students were interviewed, teachers were interviewed, principals from other districts were down visiting, and so that they were interviewed as part of that. So we will have that as well, online, so you can see, in the minute, so you can see that link.
That's great.
Very, very recently, we've had three eighth-grade students participate in the National History Day competition at Orno, in Orno, and I'm just going to read their first names, because I didn't triple-check the safety and, you know, the last name.
Parental.
So Noah, Mila, and Olivia represented Noble High School, really. Noble, well. Mila focused her exhibition on Nellie Bly, and Noah placed second in his division for his paper on Fitz Haber. And Olivia earned first place for her exhibition on World War II scrap drives. And Olivia and Noah will move to the championship at the University of Maryland in June. This is our second year, second year of sending students to that finals.
That's great.
Tomorrow, our Noble High School Tech Challenge Robotics Team will present their robot at the shipyard. So that's, that's exciting, yep. And then just two dates to make sure that I have on the radar for you. The York County Special Olympics, which is always such an incredible day, that is next Friday.
Yep. Rain date of the 17th, if it's raining.
But we're not going to have rain.
We always have rain. We're in trouble, but okay.
But that's a wonderful day.
Say the date again.
Uh, Friday the 10th, May 10th. And the 17th is the.
Is a rain day, yeah.
Yep.
What time is that third at?
It's all day.
All day.
It starts, it starts at nine, and runs, it runs usually till about 1:00. Feel free to come, it is, it's a great day, the kids have a great time, and our staff does a great job, really, laying it up. And there's over 500 athletes that come from all around the county.
Yeah, and the really awesome thing is that at our, at all of our levels, but at our elementary schools, they make huge signs for our athletes, and, you know, clap them out and clap them back in, and it's just a very, very, very great day. It's a very good, nice community day. And that's taken a year of planning, every, you know, that takes a year. So, and then the next one is our Adult Education graduation, and that has been set for May 30th. They'd start their photos at 5:30, but the ceremony itself begins at 6:00.
Lots to celebrate.
Yeah, yes, okay.
And next is public input.
I had one more question. No, sorry. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so anyone especially watching the recording, love on your teachers next week.
Awesome. Public input. Okay. A adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Wow. That's a wow. That's a wow. Wow.
Wow, wow.
I just got to say that.